To the month end meeting of the executive committee, if you would please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have properly noticed this meeting in compliance with FOIA, check. Need a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Without exception, we'll approve the agenda. Are there any exceptions? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes of January 3, 2022.
So moved.
Have a motion.
I'll second that.
Have a second. We'll approve the minutes of the January 3, 2022 meeting without exception. Are there any exceptions? I have a little teeny picture of everybody, so I have to really squint to see you. Okay, yes, sir. Did you have an -- Logan, did you have an exception? Okay, all right. All right, that brings us to item number six on the agenda, which is citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens that have asked to speak?
No, sir, not for this meeting.
Okay. In the vast throngs in the audience, are there any of you who would like to enlighten us, regale us in any way, shape, or form? Okay. Brings us to item seven, which is a discussion regarding the elements of the Rules and Procedures Handbook. For those members of council who are with us, are online today, that book, as far as I'm concerned, is complete, and you have a copy of it. You have ample opportunity to digest it at your convenience and let us know if there are any changes you think we need to make. And if not, then Sarah and I will begin to look at formatting it, where we're going to put the captions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But as far as the actual work on it, we're concerned, is done. Item number eight is 2122 budget amendment to recognize ARPA funds, and I believe our deputy administrator is going to speak to us on that.
Sarah, good afternoon. You have before you this afternoon a recommendation to adopt an ordinance that would allow for expenditure of ARPA funds that has been in part received by Beaufort County and will be received by Beaufort County this year. The total of those funds is a little over $37.3 million. You'll recall that staff presented their recommendations to you at February's budget retreat. Based upon the feedback that we received from you all at the time, those project lists were further refined and are included in your agenda packet this afternoon. There are two notable changes that I'd like to direct your attention to. The first is that the recommendation for a splash pad and aquatic type facility on St. Helena has been removed. It has been replaced with two items. Number one is a partnership with the Golagichi Farmer Co-op in the amount of $250,000. The other is just a more generic use of the remaining $1.25 million for recreational facilities or improvements on St. Helena. So we kept those monies in their geographic location to benefit the communities that live there. The other most notable change here is a recommendation by administration that we utilize $2.5 million of ARPA funds to provide for premium pay under the final rule. This would compensate employees that worked during the -- really during the height of the pandemic and specifically between the months of April 2020 and January of 2022. The total that any one employee could exceed -- would receive would not exceed $3,000. Now, we are still awaiting for final estimates because we're still gathering information on the number of employees at each of the fire districts. They would also be eligible to receive this pay. Once those final amounts are known, we will let you know what those are. But for now, we have $2.5 million in the budget for the ARPA expenditure. Now, if the amounts come in and exceed that, it is administration's recommendation that we use in order to fund the balance of those amounts, use general funds surpluses from each of the two fiscal years that we completed while under the pandemic. Other than those two changes, that's pretty much what you saw at the budget retreat, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from council to our deputy administrator?
Not a question, but a compliment, that the way it's organized now is very easy to understand, so hats off to administration for putting it in that format.
I have a question. Whitney, if you would, go back over the first change that you addressed with the splash pad and the rest of that presentation.
Okay, yes, sir. So initially, there was a recommendation to expend $1.25 million on a splash pad or similar type aquatic activity on St. Helena. We've received feedback that rather than that very specific recreational activity on St. Helena, that perhaps we could refine the facilities that we already have and enhance the programming that we have. So we have removed the $1.25 million that was very specific in nature, replaced it with something more generic, just below that, the $1 million, and the remaining $250,000 would be provided to the farmers' co-op. And that would be based upon reimbursable expenditures for things such as equipment and stuff like that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of council, including Mr. Flueeling, who's in the audience? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Chris Hervashon has a question.
On my.
Chris.
Oh, Chris, okay. I'm sorry, yes, Chris.
That's okay, thank you.
Oh, that's right, you have a little teeny person on my screen. Sorry, I didn't see you there.
Thank you for that. How many organizations make up the co-op out on St. Helena, out of curiosity?
I think just one.
Well, how many -- okay, so how many members make up the co-op?
I actually do not have that information, but I'll be happy to find that out for you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
Certainly. Anyone else?
Anybody else? All right, thank you very much, appreciate that. That moves us to item number 10 on our agenda, which is a discussion slash action on modifications of the resolution creating a citizens advisory committee for the proposed transportation sales tax referendum.
You skipped an item.
Yeah, you skipped number nine.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Yes, I did. Item number nine, recommendation to approve change order to Myrtle Park commercial site development, and who's going to speak to that one? Anybody? Okay. We have dueling speakers here. Okay, we have Jared.
Chairman, we didn't approve number nine, I mean, number eight. Did we need a vote? Did we need a motion and a second?
Yeah, I don't think there was a final action on the ARPA.
There wasn't.
First.
Okay. We need to -- what do we need, a motion? And a second?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, yeah, I stand corrected on item number eight. We're going to need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we amend the budget for the ARPA funds as explained.
All right, we have a motion and we need a second.
I will second that.
And we have a second. All right, we're in discussion on item number eight. Apologies for not bringing this forward for a motion. I didn't realize it needed a motion. Any comments, questions from members of council? Okay, without exception, or objection, we will approve item number eight on the agenda. Are there any exceptions?
It will be moved to county council.
And move it on to county council, thank you, Joe. Move it on to county council. Hearing none, is approved, and we will move this forward to county council. Now, back to item number nine, Myrtle Park commercial site development, and that's going to be Jared, thank you.
Yes, sir. So this is a change order to existing project that we have at Myrtle Park. This is an economic development project where the county has to spend majority tax credits on the site work prior to us entering into the purchase sale agreement with a developer so he can meet his economic development goals as set forth in the agreement. All those agreements are in place, but what we're here today is just to -- we did the initial site work in the initial bid, but we didn't get up to the full value of the credits, which is $577,000. So this change order is for $180,000. That gets us to the threshold that we need to meet. This would include the rocking, the first layer of asphalt, and curbing, not the final layer of asphalt. So after they get done with their building, they'll do that on their dollar, but this will get us to the point where we can finalize the credits and then make the sale agreement. And once it's all complete, it would transfer to the developer.
Okay. Do we need a motion on this?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, any questions to Jared from members of council? Okay, I don't hear any, I don't see any, and I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion to recommend the approved change order two for the Myrtle Park Commercial Park to be approved by this committee and sent to county council for approval.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, without objection, we will approve item number nine on the agenda. Are there any objections or exceptions? Seeing none, item number nine is approved. Item number 10, discussion action on modifications to the resolution creating a citizens advisory committee for the proposed transportation sales tax referendum. Who's going to speak to that?
I'll begin speaking to this. The reason for this and the reason for the special committee meeting or the special council meeting is a result of conversations that I had with a council member who has just arrived. And based upon that conversation, I felt that it was necessary for us to clearly define what a citizens committee is and who should be on that citizens committee so that the deadline
Brings us to item seven, which is a discussion regarding the elements of the Rules and Procedures Handbook. For those members of council who are with us or online today, that book, as far as I'm concerned, is complete, and you have a copy of it. You have ample opportunity to digest it at your convenience and let us know if there are any changes you think we need to make. And if not, then Sarah and I will begin to look at formatting it, where we're going to put the captions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But as far as the actual work on it, we're concerned, is done. Item number eight is a 2122 budget amendment to recognize ARPA funds, and I believe our deputy administrator is going to speak to us on that.
Sarah, good afternoon. You have before you this afternoon a recommendation to adopt an ordinance that would allow for expenditure of ARPA funds that has been in part received by Beaufort County and will be received by Beaufort County this year. The total of those funds is a little over $37.3 million. You'll recall that staff presented their recommendations to you at February's budget retreat. Based upon the feedback that we received from you all at the time, those project lists were further refined and are included in your agenda packet this afternoon. There are two notable changes that I'd like to direct your attention to. The first is that the recommendation for a splash pad and aquatic type facility on St. Helena has been removed. It has been replaced with two items. Number one is a partnership with the Golagichi Farmer Co-op in the amount of $250,000. The other is just a more generic use of the remaining $1.25 million for recreational facilities or improvements on St. Helena. So we kept those monies in their geographic location to benefit the communities that live there. The other most notable change here is a recommendation by administration that we utilize $2.5 million of ARPA funds to provide for premium pay under the final rule. This would compensate employees that worked during, really during the height of the pandemic and specifically between the months of April 2020 and January of 2022. The total that any one employee could exceed, would receive, would not exceed $3,000. Now, we are still awaiting for final estimates because we're still gathering information on the number of employees at each of the fire districts. They would also be eligible to receive this pay. Once those final amounts are known, we will let you know what those are. But for now, we have $2.5 million in the budget for the ARPA expenditure. Now, if the amounts come in and exceed that, it is administration's recommendation that we use in order to fund the balance of those amounts, use general funds, surpluses from each of the two fiscal years that we completed while under the pandemic. Other than those two changes, that's pretty much what you saw at the budget retreat, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from council to our deputy administrator?
Not a question, but a compliment, that the way it's organized now is very easy to understand, so hats off to administration for putting it in that format.
I have a question. Whitney, if you would go back over the first change that you addressed with the splash pad and the rest of that presentation.
Okay. Yes, sir. So initially, there was a recommendation to expend $1.25 million on a splash pad or similar type aquatic activity on St. Helena. We've received feedback that rather than that very specific recreational activity on St. Helena, that perhaps we could refine the facilities that we already have and enhance the programming that we have. So we have removed the $1.25 million that was very specific in nature, replaced it with something more generic, just below that, the $1 million, and the remaining $250,000 would be provided to the farmers' co-op. And that would be based upon reimbursable expenditures for things such as equipment and stuff like that.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of council, including Mr. Fluehling, who's in the audience? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Chris Hervichon has a question.
Online.
Chris.
Oh, Chris. Okay. Sorry. Yes, Chris.
That's okay. Thank you.
Oh, that's right. You're the little teeny person on my screen. Sorry, I didn't see you there.
Thank you for that. How many organizations make up the co-op out on St. Helena, out of curiosity?
I think just one.
Well, how many, okay, so how many members make up the co-op?
I actually do not have that information, but I'll be happy to find that out for you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Certainly. Anyone else?
Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. That moves us to item number 10 on our agenda, which is a discussion slash action on modifications of the resolution creating a citizens advisory committee for the proposed transportation sales tax referendum.
You skipped an item.
Yeah, you skipped number nine.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Yes, I did. Item number nine, recommendation to approve change order to Myrtle Park commercial site development. And who's going to speak to that one? Anybody? We have dueling speakers here. Okay, we have Jared.
Chairman, we didn't approve number nine, I mean, number eight. Did we need a vote? Did we need a motion and a second?
Yeah, I don't think there was a final action on the ARPA.
There wasn't.
First.
Okay. We need to, what do we need, a motion? And a second? Okay. I stand corrected on item number eight. We're going to need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we amend the budget for the ARPA funds as explained.
All right, we have a, we have a motion, and we need a second.
I will second that.
And we have a second. All right, we're in discussion on item number eight. My apologies for not bringing this forward for a motion. I didn't realize it needed a motion. Any comments, questions from members of council? Okay. Without exception or objection, we will approve item number eight on the agenda. Are there any exceptions?
It will be moved to county council.
And move it on to county council. Thank you, Joe. Move it on to county council. Hearing none, is approved, and we will move this forward to county council. Now, back to item number nine, Myrtle Park commercial site development, and that's going to be, Jared, thank you.
Yes, sir. So this is a change order to existing project that we have at Myrtle Park. This is an economic development project where the county has to spend utility tax credits on the site work prior to us entering into the purchase sale agreement with a developer so he can meet his economic development goals as set forth in the agreements. All those agreements are in place, but what we're here today is just to, we did the initial site work in the initial bid, but we didn't get up to the full value of the credits, which is $577,000. So this change order is for $180,000. That gets us to the, to the threshold that we need to meet. This would include the rocking, the first layer of asphalt, and curbing, not, not the final layer of asphalt. So after they get done with their building, they'll, they'll do that on their dollar. But this will get us to the point where we can finalize the credits and then make the sale agreement. And once it's all complete, it would transfer to the developer.
Do we need a motion on this?
Yes.
Okay. Any, first of all, any questions to Jared from members of council? Okay. I don't hear any. I don't see any. And I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion to recommend the approved change order two for the Myrtle Park Commercial Park to be approved by this committee and sent to county council for approval.
I will second the motion.
We have a, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, without objection, we will approve item number nine on the agenda. Are there any objections or exceptions? Saying none, item number nine is approved. Item number 10, discussion action on modifications to the resolution creating a citizens advisory committee for the proposed transportation sales tax referendum. Who's going to speak to that?
I'll, I'll begin speaking to this. The reason for this and the reason for the special committee meeting, or the special council meeting is a result of conversations that I had with a council member who has just arrived. And based upon that conversation, I felt that it was necessary for us to clearly define what a citizens committee is and who should be on that citizens committee so that the deadline will be met. And you can see the proposed changes there.
I'll open it up to any members of council who wants to comment on this. Obviously, the, the issue here involves whether or not, whether or not elected officials should be appointed to the citizens committee. We'll hear from anyone who has, wants to weigh in on that. The chairman's position is that it is for citizens only, which excludes elected officials. I share that view. Comments from members of council? Yes, sir. Mr. Rodman.
Excuse me. Sorry to be late. I'm very much in support of us looking at an amendment that defines...
Hold on a second. That jet, that jet go. We're going to wait for the jet to pass. Sound of freedom.
Yeah. All right. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm very much in support of us revisiting the issue about who can and can't be on the committee. As I understand, I may not be the only one that is in that situation. I guess there's a little background on this. I've been an outspoken supporter of the fact that I think we need to do a referendum, given where we are from a traffic standpoint. That's one thing I'm happy to be interrupted about.
Right.
I think we all are. We love the Marine Corps. But I also think that we're, we're running way behind where we, where we should be on this thing, and time is short. We're probably the better part of nine months behind where we were in prior referendums in order to carry this thing out in a, in an orderly fashion. And I've asked a couple times, hopefully at some point, maybe even today, you know, we might have a, a schedule of what is actually happening, because I, I view that we're out of time, and maybe I'm wrong, but it would seem. So the other thing that I would comment on is that I think as we've been talking about this, and as I've been dialoguing with Jared on it, he has a wonderful concept about where we, where we need to go with this to make this a world-class transportation community. And it falls in the category of probably longer referendums, much like Charleston and other places do, as opposed to what we've historically done in the past, which were shorter-term projects. And it was interesting, last Friday, I sat in on the LATS meeting, and they're in the middle of finalizing their long-term plan, and one of, one of the takeaways from that was that they too view that we, we have a, not a large number of near-term projects, but really a longer-term, large number of projects to go through. So anyway, having said all of that, I've always believed that we got some real political headwinds to deal with on this. You know, we've got the traditional thing, but the growth is in one area, but everybody has to support it. The next November, there's going to be a lot of national headwinds that we're going to be, would be dealing with. You know, we're, the citizens are struggling with inflation, and this is a regressive tax. So it's, it's, it's a tough one that's going to get, get debated. You know, we, the majority of the seats on, on council are up, and many of us are going to be, you know, in election, so this will become part of whatever, whatever is happening. We've got issues like 278 on the island, where there's, the bulk of the community is very much opposed to what's going on, and there's at least three organizations that I'm aware of that are actively ready to oppose what's going on. And so we're going to have social media out there big time, you know, while all this is going on. We're a little bit crosswise with some of the municipalities, things like the uniform fee. To get it passed, you know, it's tough if the two political parties don't endorse it. They, they basically came out against the, the last two that we put on the, on the table. So we, as a council, we've lost a little bit of credibility because they both went down by about a three to one. Now, having said all that, I still remain committed to the fact that we, we've got the problem with the transportation and the roads. You know, we need to do this. The referendum is the, is the right thing to do. Now, maybe I'm a little bit foolish to keep believing that, you know, when I think about it politically, but that's where I am. And so as I thought about the appointment piece, I kind of concluded that I was probably the best person to, you know, represent my district. I think I have a fair amount of background relative to the issues that we're dealing with that would be useful to the committee. You know, I think I'm generally fairly good at, without taking an advocacy position, help groups sort out what the alternatives are that they're, they're, they're dealing with to reach some kind of conclusions. When I think about the voters, particularly, you know, my district has relatively few kids, which means I've got a, a much larger percentage of voters than the typical district in the county. And they turn out and vote. So my thought process was that if they saw that I was involved in, in support and supportive, that might help bring them, some of them, some of them along. So when I got thinking about it, between caucus and when we had the meeting, what was it, about two weeks ago, I guess, when we voted on the thing, it was mentioned that one of the mayors was appointing himself or was thinking about appointing himself. So that kind of triggered my thought process that, you know, I'm kind of a citizen anyway. So I said, well, why not do it? But if I did it, I would take on the role, that I would not be, I would not vote. I'd abstain from any voting, and I would not advocate for any particular projects, but that I, that I might be useful in, in doing that. Now, if, if it turns out that we vote this up, I've, I've got a person in mind that has agreed to go ahead and serve, and I think he would be good. It's kind of funny, he actually is outside my district, but he, I think he would be, be very good, so happy to do that. So I'm happy to divorce myself from it, totally abstain from the, you know, the process if that's where we want to go. The one exception to that would be the Seepine Circle, which is worthy of mention. I don't care whether it's in or out of the, the referendum, and I would leave that up to the committee and the voters. However, the solution that is on the table in, if you look at the LATS recommendations, would be to take, if any are familiar with the, the circle at the Parkway, Bluffton Parkway and 46, which most people view as a, as a disaster type of thing, and many of us actually end up going out of the way to drive around it. And take that concept and superimpose it on the Seepine Circle, which I think would be a disaster, because Seepine Circle is already the most accident-prone circle on the, or place on Hilton Head, any intersection on Hilton Head. So you end up with making a situation worse. And part of the problem is you've got a lot of elderly people like me, and then you've got a lot of tourists that haven't got the faintest idea, maybe the first time they ever saw a circle. And so it just lends itself to a lot of accidents. That's the one place that, you know, I would, would have to perhaps take a role. So anyway, I'm kind of indifferent as to whether I'm serving in that capacity or you do it in some other way. I do think, though, that it does give me a little bit of pause of whether council should be telling individual elected officials how they want to, how they should be represented, how they should represent their constituents. And it also gives me a little bit of pause as to whether we should be telling the municipalities how they should be appointing somebody. But in any event, I, I actually do think that it's a, it's a tough uphill, and it is a political process, and I'm not totally comfortable with that we're sending surrogates to, to do what is a political job that we should be doing. But in any event, that was kind of my thought process. I hope we end up with whatever makes sense, and I'll serve either way, Paul and Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Rodman. This is an example, one of many, where elected officials agree to disagree. We oftentimes have matters that come before us where we don't see eye to eye, all eleven of us, and what we do is we, we discuss it, and we vote it out, and we move on, which is exactly what we're going to do at the next meeting. We're going to have a special called meeting of county council to vote on this very thing. I will offer my comments, and then I'll allow anybody else or encourage anybody else who wants to comment on this, including folks in the, that are not part of this, of this committee. I think that, that this referendum will have a lot more credibility with the voters if it's driven by citizens, not politicians. Now, that, obviously, Mr. Rodman and I is a perfect example. We disagree on this. Fair enough. He might be right. I might be right. Who knows? But I have, I'm entitled to my opinion. So I'm going to support the, the language proposed by our chairman to clarify who can, who may and who cannot be, be part of this, part of this committee. And I'm going to go with the, with the non-elected officials. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
If, if I might, Paul, I, I agree with the chairman. The chairman made, made a wise decision in not allowing elected officials to be a part of the committee that's, that's drafting the project so that we don't, we don't influence and then drive, and then drive the, the project in, in the direction that we would want it to go. And so citizens serving on the committee, having an impact of drafting the project, is complimentary, I think, to the, to the citizens of their concerns. And then we got to be mindful that the funds that are going to support these projects is being paid by the citizenry at large. And so this is a way of having all the citizens, those participating on the, on the committee, as well as the citizenry as a large, buying into the projects that, that comes out of the draft for this, for this committee. So I, I'm, I'm on board with it.
Logan, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm in support of the changes. There are a couple things I'd like to add to it, though, comment-wise. I, I do appreciate Stu coming out and saying that we're behind on this project, because we definitely are. But if we want this to be successful, we also have to be honest of why we're behind, and that's because we moved forward with something that the municipalities wanted, but lost, and put this table until that vote was done. I, I want to get this project done. I told, I said this in the last county council meeting, that I think it's the way to go, the direction that we should have went all along. So if, if we want to gain the trust of the public, which Mr. Rodman clearly stated multiple other projects, that we did not have the trust of the publics because of that, that we need to be upfront. I think the citizens committee is a way to make up ground. I don't, do not think any elected official should be on it. I think we should be transparent, the people are putting on it, and let them make that decision, because ultimately, we work with those people in our district.
Special remark.
Somebody up in our district.
Oops.
For that. And so I can tell you, the person that I picked in my district's a retired cop that moved here from California, that did not like the way that it was being done over there and doesn't want to see the same thing happen here. And I'll be upfront, that's why I picked the person I wanted to. So I think as we continue to move forward, I think us as elected officials need to stay out of that committee, the citizens committee, that they're supposed to send a recommendation towards us, and then we review it from there. It also says in this that we have the final say in the vote if we're going to move forward with this or not. So I definitely think we need to make sure that all eleven of us are removed from the committee and let the citizens draft it based on their district so we can get an influx of all eleven.
Thank you, Logan. Mark?
Yes, I, I agree as well. It would either be all of us on the committee together and us as a, a council deciding, or I think, as we're coming up now, I think it is best to have a citizens committee, and I think Logan kind of touched on it, but, but obviously, in, in the resolution already, was under the old number seven, now it's under the number nine. The committee's recommendations shall be, shall be presented to the county council for consideration, adoption and/or revision of the recommendations. So we, as a council, are going to have final say of what happens and what goes forward. So again, I'll, I'll be in support of making the changes.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you. I agree with pretty much everything that's been said prior to me in, in changing this so that it is truly a citizens committee. I think we are at risk of referendum fatigue if we're not there already. And I do think if something like this is going to be successful, it needs to come from the citizens up as opposed to the politicians down. So for that reason, I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Anybody else on council? We have in, in our audience today, we have the mayor of Beaufort and Councilman Fluehling and several other folks. I'm going to give them, anybody in the audience who has an opportunity wants to speak on this, you're welcome to.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Mayor Murray of Beaufort, city of Beaufort.
You guys are going to vote in the direction that I desire. First, I just want to thank county council for standing up the committee so earlier in the year. I think you're absolutely right about getting ahead of it and trying to get a citizens committee structured to really prioritize the list of projects, and I agree with all of what council has said. I also can appreciate Councilman Rodman's willingness. Like him, I share a passion for this work, a passion for transportation projects, and there's no doubt that the electeds in this county probably have a, a more solid handle on the history, the future, where we're, where we're trying to go. So I certainly can appreciate your willingness to participate. The mayor of Port Royal and I, we had a joint council meeting about two weeks ago and discussed this topic. We also had considered appointing ourselves from the municipalities to the committee, but, but felt that really citizens ought to serve. And as Councilman Lawson pointed out, just remind county council that after the citizens get finished with the recommendation list, you guys get bites at the apple to polish it before it actually gets, gets put on the ballot. So I, I'm supportive of it being a citizens committee. I have on the agenda tomorrow night at Beaufort City Council for us to consider nominees, and we intend to get you an appointment tomorrow evening after our, our meeting. Council will vote hopefully unanimously. But finally, I'll just say again, thank you for including the municipalities. Thank you for standing this up and completely agree I'll be a citizens committee. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Anybody else in the audience who wants to comment on this? Okay. I don't think we need a motion on this. It's already on the agenda for the...
Yes.
We'll vote on this at the next...
You need a motion to recommend it to council for action.
I beg your pardon, and I'll ask for a motion to recommend the, the language that is in the executive committee agenda to the full council in approximately 10 minutes. Yes, sir.
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I got, I got motions to move coming from everywhere, which is good, including Mr. Rodman. Thank you. So I guess there was a second in there somewhere. I give, I give the motion to Mr. Rodman, the second to Mr., to Mr. Dawson. Is that all right with you, Mr. Dawson? Okay. All right. Without objection, I'll move this forward to council. Are there any objections?
No objections, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank Mayor Murray for taking the time to show up and speak on this today before his meeting tomorrow.
Did you hear that, Mayor Murray?
I did.
Okay, thank you. All right, without objection, and I hear no objections, this matter will move forward to council in the next 10 minutes or so. All right. All matters having been brought before this body, we're adjourned. The next meeting is scheduled for 1:30 or...
Five-minute break.
Five-minute break.
Five-minute break, okay?
Special meeting.
Back in five minutes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. We have an attendance online today. We have Councilman Lawson, Councilman Dawson, Councilman Cunningham, and Councilman, I thought I saw Councilman McClellan, but I don't see him. And then in person, we have Councilman Flueeling, Chairman Passamit, myself, Councilman Somerville, Councilman Rodman, and Councilman Glover. First thing is the public notification. This meeting was published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. And we have a need for an amendment to the, two amendments to the agenda. One, Mr. Greenway will speak to, and then the other one is moving one item up.
Yes, ma'am. We would recommend that staff that you all consider deferring action on item number 11, which is the amendment to the Mayland Wolf Plan Unit Development Master Plan. There are some outstanding items on that particular issue that we need to discuss with the developer. I had a meeting scheduled with them a few weeks ago. They counseled that meeting, and it's not, we're not going to meet until in the morning, but it relates to affordable housing percentages, changes to the master plan, things that are included in the existing development agreement about a public safety site and all of that that we at the staff need to resolve with them before you all take any action on this item. So we would recommend that you amend the agenda accordingly if necessary.
Okay, do I have a motion to remove item number 11?
Yes, I would like to make the motion that we postpone any recommendations regarding item number 11 until the next Natural Resources Committee meeting. Further, I would ask that item number 15 on the agenda be moved up to item number 7 and duly move everybody down one after that.
I'll second the motion, ma'am.
Okay, I have a second. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. On item number 11, I have a question, Mr. Greenway, on traffic impact. So when you deliberate and you come back, I just want to know the difference in the impact on the traffic.
Yeah, we have that. We'll have that prepared for you when we do our presentation next month.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second without objection?
Yes, ma'am.
This passes, so we are moving number 15 up to number 7.
I'll note also, Mr. McClellan is here.
Oh, he's on, okay, good. But before that, let's approve the minutes. Do we have any?
No, we now have to, the agenda as amended, and I will make the motion to vote on the agenda as amended.
I have a second to vote on the agenda as amended.
And Mr. Flueeling made the second.
Any more discussion? Do we need to take a roll call without objection? Okay, the agenda is amended, as stated. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from January 3rd. I hope everyone's had time to review them. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from January 3rd?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Somerville. Any discussion or amendments? Hearing none, without objection, the minutes from January 3rd are approved. At this time, we will open it up for citizens' comments. I have listed four people, starting in order. I'd just like to remind everyone, we have a three-minute limit, and please, when you speak, speak with discretion and without insults and all those things that we talk about, treating each other like we'd like to be treated. First on the agenda is, for public comment, is Mayor Murray, Stephen Murray, from the city of Beaufort.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm here to speak on, I guess it's Agenda Item 7 now, the Ladies Island Plan. You might appreciate that I actually wrote my comments down instead of the rambling stream of consciousness that I normally bring to you. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comment on this important issue. Together, Beaufort County and the city of Beaufort have been working together to best manage the future of Ladies Island, and we should all be proud of the work that we've accomplished. The 2017 StanTech transportation study examined how we move people through our existing road network and made recommendations on how we can make transportation improvements to this critical corridor. This study led to the capital sales tax passage by voters in 2018 to invest $30 million. And I'm very appreciative to county staff for working with stakeholders to take the StanTech recommendations and make sure improvements are appropriate and strike a balance between moving cars and a future Ladies Island that isn't solely asphalt and concrete. The bad news is that the new estimates have us $40 million short of the funding needed to complete the voter-approved projects. But I know we will, working together, find necessary funding to complete these projects in due time. In 2018, the county, Town of Port Royal, city of Beaufort, with a broad coalition of stakeholders, crafted and presented the Ladies Island Plan. This plan sought to understand at the macro level the current development position of the island, future development pressures, capture resident vision for the future, and to suggest pragmatic strategies that we could use to help us achieve this vision. It's important to remember that both Beaufort County Council and Beaufort City Council approved unanimously the Ladies Island Plan in 2018, formally supporting the strategies contained within and providing the political endorsement for our respective institutions to get to work on implementation. And while maybe not as fast as some would like, or as smoothly as others would prefer, we should all also be proud of the work that we've accomplished to date. We have $30 million in the bank, a solid transportation improvement plan for the main arteries, changes to sewer density ordinance, a multi-jurisdictional fill ordinance, several density reductions through rural and critical lands acquisitions, and maybe the most exciting of all, a dedicated right turn lane by the Walgreens. That was supposed to be a joke. But make no mistake, we have significant amount of work to do if we are sincere about achieving the common goals clearly presented in the Ladies Island Plan. A quick reminder of the position we find ourselves in can be found on page 4 of the plan. Quote, "The amount of growth that could happen under current policies and regulations would likely exceed the capacity of infrastructure and natural systems on the island. With a current population of approximately 15,000 potentially growing to 18,000 to 22,000 by 2035, new measures are needed to manage growth." Additionally, the study found that we have approximately 6,000 residential dwelling units on the island today, but has the potential through existing zoning and development agreements to add another 8,795 residential units. Think about that for a second. Residential development across Ladies Island has the legal and by right potential to more than double in the coming decades. Now remember that everyone who lives not just on Ladies Island, but on St. Helena, Daulta, Harbor, Fripp, Cusaw, Distant, and the rest of the sea islands must come through Ladies Island across one of two bridges to get to the mainland. Two bridges that already see tremendous pressures during peak rush hours. There are no easy or cheap answers to how we manage growth to ensure Ladies Island remains a pleasant place to live that isn't crippled with traffic gridlock in the coming years. The good news is that we've done a significant amount of work to understand the challenges. We have a multi-jurisdictional policy review committee in Nervick in place and a plan. We've come to understand that growth management must be addressed holistically across the region. While roads and bridges are certainly a critical part of how our communities function, they are only part of a well-functioning community. Zoning, design standards, development policy, public green space, multimodal transportation, connectivity, rural versus urban transects are also critical parts of this conversation. Which brings us to why we are here today. I commend County Administrator Greenway and Planning Director Merchant's commitment to public investment to begin at Ladies Island, to begin a Ladies Island Village Center Master Plan. Say that three times fast. His request today is formally supported by the Ladies Island Plan, the Beaufort County Comprehensive Plan, and the draft City of Beaufort Comprehensive Plan. Each of these documents in some form or other call for the creation of a Ladies Island Village Center Plan, and specifically, the Ladies Island Plan states that, quote, "There is consensus that the future village should be high-quality with a unique sense of place, but there is no simple definition of what that means. There is no one-size-fits-all solution. The answer is more complex. It should be neither full urban nor suburban. It should be a hybrid mix of both. It should be a series of mixed-use clusters that fit within their locations in the corridor." I think most of us would agree that the current zoning and design standards fall short of this vision. An example, the proposed site of a national chain coffee store with a drive-through in the middle of the, quote, "village" has recently made three county ZBOA appearances and this month will be heard a fourth time. To their credit, county staff has spent an inordinate amount of time working with the applicant on this single project to try to figure out how to make it work. I think most of us agree a high-intensity drive-through in the middle of the village is probably inappropriate, but our current zoning and design standards are close to allowing one. Additionally, just down the corridor on the site of one of my favorite watering holes, the fill-in station, this property is owned City T5 UC, which would allow up to five stories of commercial or residential development. And I think most of us would agree that this is too intensive development along the corridor. So while I'm appreciative and supportive of county staff's recommendation for a design drawing and standards planning charrette, I don't believe it goes far enough. I'd like to quickly take you back to 2005, when the county and the city, using impact fees, hired Dover Colen Associates to complete the Boundary Street redevelopment plan. Boundary Street is the entrance to the city, and as a typical commercial strip corridor, it does not enhance Beaufort's overall character and charm, but rather serves as a poor gateway to our historic city. Working together, we created a robust and holistic plan for this corridor that has increased safety, efficiency, and is encouraging a built environment that is reflective of our community's vision for the future. This plan engaged the public and made very specific policy recommendations for zoning, design standards, new public roadways, pedestrian and bike access, and development that is Beaufort-scaled. Look at our McDonald's.
You got to wrap it up?
It's two stories, yes, ma'am. Brick and hardy plank clad, lots of glass, and set near the intersection with sidewalk access. This is a direct result of our development plan. In the year following completion of the roadway project, accidents along the corridor are down 22 percent. It will take decades to fully realize the vision, but Boundary Street will eventually have a tree canopy lined with mixed-use, high-quality development that is not only aesthetically pleasing, but will also help us relieve automobile pressures on our roadways, provide tax-based sustainability, and a host of other positive benefits as we all work to capture the growth that is coming in the most responsible way. I respectfully request that you authorize county staff to release the Ladies Island Plan Implementation Committee's request for proposal that was submitted over a year ago. This RFP mirrors the Boundary Street Plan's scope of work, and I believe more appropriately captures the directive of the Ladies Island Plan. The city is a willing partner that already has some funds budgeted and looks forward to our continued work together, and I hope county council will support the request that is being made by the city, the Sea Island Corridor Coalition, Ladies Island Implementation Committee, Northern Regional Plan Implementation Committee, and the Coastal Conservation League. We have the resources, we have the leadership, and the vision to bring forth a plan that will help the island move more efficiently, productively, and create a built environment that we can all be proud of. Let's not stop short at this critical moment in the sea island's future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next we have Mr. Chuck Newton. Public comment. I would like to remind you again of the three minutes.
He needs to give that to Sarah, so that that becomes an official part of the process.
All right, that's a good suggestion. Our chairman suggested if you could give that to, what you just said, Mayor Murray, to...
To Sarah, so that it becomes an official part of the minutes of this meeting?
I hope you won't judge my grammar and punctuation.
Well, it would become part of the minutes anyway, but this way we'll have it in writing. Okay.
Good afternoon, I'm Chuck Newton, Chairman of the Sea Island Corridor Coalition. I corresponded with members of the committee over the weekend. I wanted to reiterate the importance of doing something. This prospect started five years ago, when 500 people showed up at Ladies Island Elementary School and set forth a bunch of things in motion to preserve the character and the ambiance and the community, sense of community on Ladies Island. Since that time, we've spent 18 months with the help of a consultant developing the Ladies Island Plan, which was unanimously adopted by county council, unanimously adopted by the city council. Since then, we've thrown nickels and dimes at the project. Virtually nothing has happened, a few things. I don't mean to say nothing, because I think the fill ordinance and some of the attendant projects were important. But in terms of doing the essential things necessary to protect and preserve Ladies Island, not much has been accomplished. Now, County Administrator has proposed this afternoon to set a $25,000 budget to Now, county administrator has proposed this afternoon to set a $25,000 budget to fund a charrette. I'm not sure a charrette is going to solve the problem necessarily. Mayor Murray just recommended the release of the RFP to get a better idea of a broader effort from qualified consultants. I think the truth lies somewhere in between. I would certainly hope that we would move forward on this expeditiously, but I would remove the "not to exceed" in the county administrator's recommendation to give us some flexibility. We can get started with $25,000 and do some of the essential work on a zoning overlay, for example, which would solve 70% of the problem. If it needs to be expanded and extended, we can come back to council or others for additional funding. But the important thing is to stop stirring the pot and just get something going here. We need to make a decision and make something happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, our next person on the list is Mr. Michael Toney.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm Mike Toney. I won't try and repeat everything that's been said already. What I'd rather focus on is what the current activities are and what we've been doing. We started out four years ago trying to come up with an RFP, which we did. The RFP was not funded, and then we got into the COVID issue. We stood up another task force under NURPK, and that task force specifically was trying to not develop an RFP, but instead put planning forward and try and develop some planning towards Ladies Island Village Center that would be appropriate to then turn over to a consultant and give them some base framework for them to do their job, hopefully reducing the amount of time and energy they would have to spend. That task force was made up of city council members, county commissioners, city, county, and town planning commission people, Sea Island Coalition, Coastal Conservation League, citizens, and county consultants. We did coordinate with engineering based on the penny sales tax throughout the time that we spent doing this. We met every two weeks during COVID because it was an important issue for us to move forward, and we all felt that way. We spent hundreds of hours in that process, and then we developed a presentation. That presentation, we have taken to most of the major property owners along Corridor 21 who have given us a thumbs up and said, yes, we want to see this proceed in the direction that the planning that we have put on the table is going. I have copies of that planning process, the people that we've met with and what we've done. That will be given to you. I can have that done. It's already been given to all of the NURPK people. I chair NURPK also, and I want to also state that I have in no way tried to go around county administration to try and do anything with this. I follow procedures. I will always follow those procedures. That's who I am. I've been doing this for over 40 years. But I would recommend going to the full consultant RFP, which I helped write. I also, after meetings with the county, developed a foreshortened RFP during the charrette process. We need to move forward with at least that, but I would like to see us move forward with the whole thing. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. All right, Ms. White, with the Coastal Coast.
Thank you. Jessie White, on behalf of the Coastal Conservation League, I actually have comments on three different items on your agenda, so I'm going to try to meet that three-minute deadline. The first is agenda item number eight, which is the downzoning of the rural and critical lands properties to T1 natural preserve. I just want to express our full support for that regarding agenda item. It was 12, I guess now it's 13. 100 Rostrum Drive rezoning. We support planning staff and the planning commission's recommendation of denial of that rezoning. As laid out in the staff report, it's not consistent with the county's comprehensive plan, and it's also in direct conflict with the development code and the intent of the T2 rural neighborhood zoning district, which is expressly intended for existing clustered communities in rural areas and not to promote tract development or rezonings. Moreover, we believe if this individual parcel is rezoned, it would open the door to any of the other T2R properties in the county to be rezoned, and taken together, that would erode and further strain the rural character of those areas and induce sprawl and threaten critical natural resources. The last agenda item we were prepared to comment on is item number seven. As has been mentioned here today, the Conservation League has been involved in growth management on Ladies Island for over five years. In 2017, we co-hosted designing Ladies Island with the Sea Island Corridor Coalition. Over 300 people attended and live and work on Ladies Island. Even five years ago, the pressure on Ladies Island was building. The county and city have made a lot of progress since 2017, and we appreciate the investment in the Ladies Island Plan. $80,000 is a significant investment, and we've made good progress toward implementing some of the recommendations of that plan. Passing restrictions on the use of fill and setting limitations on when and where septic can be used are important changes that were both recommended in the Ladies Island Plan. But as the steering committee and the Village Center task forces have continued to wrestle with pressing land use issues on the island, we've come to the realization that we're lacking both the necessary knowledge and the bandwidth to craft a full-fledged master plan for the island. Rezoning a robust plan is necessary, and the steering committees crafted a request for proposals. We submitted a copy of that with our comments over the weekend and hope you've had an opportunity to look at it. But in general, we're appreciative of staff and the administration's willingness to spend an additional $25,000 on planning for Ladies Island, but are afraid that that amount will do little more than what we already have. And we recommend that the task force be allowed to get the request for proposal, make any necessary changes, and release the document to get bids. People want to live on Ladies Island. They want to work on Ladies Island. Businesses want to build on Ladies Island, and we're seeing controversial projects pop up that are one that's currently before the county zoning board. A master plan can help us be prepared and is urgently needed. We thank you.
Thank you. I think that's a record, three different items that I've seen since I've been with council in one public comment period. You did be commended for getting all that said. Okay, our new number seven is resolution authorizing the county... Oh, let me... Anyone else that changed their mind about public comments wants to make some at this time? All right. We will have public comment at the end, too, in case someone thinks of something. All right. Resolution authorizing the county administrator to provide funding not to exceed $25,000 for a design planning charrette to develop design criteria and drawings to enhance the implementation of the Ladies Island Plan. And Mr. Greenway and Mr. Atkinson?
I'm just going to introduce this real quick, then I'm going to turn it over to Chuck because over the weekend, I realized that I have gotten to the point where I am so frustrated about this particular issue and the amount of staff resources that this particular item is taking up, consuming. In my particular case, I have had over about 10 hours worth of meetings on this RFQ request and trying to tell the folks here that I do not support this request. I do not support an additional $200,000 of county money going to planning on Ladies Island. We have a plan. We need to implement that plan. In my particular case, we have staff. I have one of the best vertical design professionals in the planning departments anywhere in the state of South Carolina, and now we have one of the best horizontal site designers that we just hired from Dorchester County in our planning department. We know how to design and implement the Ladies Island Plan. So having said that, I'm frustrated about this issue. Part of that realization is that I need to step aside and turn this over to other staff members because I think if you all fund this, it's going to be a waste of taxpayer money. It's going to be more of the same that we already have over there. It's just going to cost you a lot more money. In addition to that, I will say that none of the folks in here talking about spending this money and releasing this RFQ are business owners or property owners on Ladies Island. There are people that drive through Ladies Island or visit Ladies Island periodically. The property owners and the business owners there are not asking for us to do this. So those are my comments. I'm going to let Chuck come up and finish it off. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric, and good afternoon to everyone. I think it is pretty self-evident by the level of passion that surrounds Ladies Island.
I hate to interrupt you, but I'm getting signals that we need a motion before we can start this discussion, so if you can hold that tight.
Well, I can present the resolution and information around that, or I can... however you want me to do it. I can present it first?
Well, there is a resolution on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
And that's the published agenda. Therefore, a member of council has to make a motion to approve, modify, whatever they want to do as far as that particular item goes. Then we can have a discussion. If we need to modify it after your comments, we can have someone make an amendment to that.
Sure. All I'm offering is staff recommendation as it relates to the resolution.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion regarding the agenda item?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve for discussion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all right. Take it serious. Discussion.
So the level of passion that surrounds Ladies Island, I think it's justified. I think Ladies Island is a center focal point of the downtown Beaufort and Sea Island entryway, and I think it's important to a lot of us on a personal level. I grew up on Ladies Island. I was born and raised in Beaufort, grew up on Ladies Island, and I remember vividly, my parents had an office at the downtown arena, or at the Ladies Island Arena, and I would walk up to Captain Gooch's and get bait, and most afternoons I would fish with Captain Jack. I don't know if any of you remember him down there with his pipe. But it's a place that is of great importance, and the direction and the growth that's going to take place there does need to be managed. I think we all agree on that. I think the end goal and the vision we all agree on, the point of contention is the best way to get there. How do we accomplish those goals? So what I would like to do is talk about the vision very quickly, what we now have and what is missing. What are the missing pieces that we need to get us from what we have to accomplishing that vision? So out of the Ladies Island Plan, the vision, the key elements of the Ladies Island Village Center vision include a desire for a mixture of compatible uses, building forms that address but do not overwhelm the street, pedestrian orientation and walkability, connected streets and circulation, improved and managed access in streets that are designed for multiple modes of transportation with a human scale. That's been around for 20 years. That vision has been around for a long time. So what do we have? What progress have we made? Number one, we have the vision, and that vision has been redefined over and over, and it has been refined to the point where now we know where we want Ladies Island to go. Ordinances, both city and county, we currently have those ordinances. They are in place. Are they perfect? No, they are not. That's one of the items that we need to address. Ladies Island Plan, that's a 109-page plan that more clearly defines the path forward and contains clear information related to the Ladies Island Village Center corridor. A lot of the information was addressed in that plan. We spent a lot of money and a lot of time and effort creating that plan. The StanTech studies identify traffic needs for Ladies Island. All of these are building on top of each other to accomplish that vision. We have traffic project funding from the penny sales tax, and county staff are currently designing road projects to accomplish the vision for Ladies Island. So what are the missing pieces? County staff sees the missing pieces as being city and county ordinance must be coordinated and refined so that they more closely match. Mayor Murray brought up two items that need to be addressed. One, the drive-through situation. Now, it has not been approved by the ZBOA. It's a special use. I don't know what direction that's going to fall in, but it's going through the process. Some of the city zoning allows things that we, and I think we can all agree, don't fit in what that vision is for the Ladies Island Plan. We need to refine both sides of those ordinances. We need to refine those ordinances. And then, as a tag on to that, we need to identify opportunities for and establish interconnectivity between businesses along the corridor. You do that through the ordinances to make it enforceable and to make the corridor usable so everybody's not dumping out on the street. You alleviate some of the traffic on Highway 21. So the two points that we're going back and forth between, do we take on a full-blown parcel-level study? Do we need to incur that expense to accomplish these things? County staff's contention is, no, we don't. We have very talented folks on our staff, and the resolution that's before you spells out why we want to do the charrette. We want to identify what portions on each side of these coins we can bring in line to accomplish those goals, but we don't need to reinvent the whole wheel. We don't need to go back and spend all of this money creating a whole new study. We already have the information. We just need to refine it. Staff, if we get cooperation, can do this. We hold the public meetings. We can pay somebody to put the drawings together, but our staff has the ability and certainly the willingness to go in and identify those differences and bring it all in line so that Ladies Island can be everything that we all want it to be. Thank you.
Can I open it up for questions? Mr. Atkinson?
I have a question, Chairman.
Okay, go ahead.
Chuck, are you saying then that the staff is recommending the granting of the $25,000 so that this can be looked at the way that will allow you to determine how you consume, that unlikely that the amount will exceed that $25,000, or that this is the first step?
So each one of these steps, and thanks for the question, each one of the steps that I've outlined has built on itself over the years. The common goal is the vision for Ladies Island. All of these plans and studies that we've done have all been done marching in that direction. This is one of the final steps, not the final, right, because we will have to continue to refine this, but if we read the point of the resolution, it's a multi-day planning charrette to develop design drawings and standards. Those standards would be the refinement of both ordinances. Now, we will have to have cooperation from the city. The staff can't change county ordinances, that's county council, and staff can't change city ordinances. That's going to be the city council. But we are certainly willing to collaborate with them, identify those things that need to be changed, and create the standard, draw the drawings, bring it before both councils, and find common ground on it. So it would be an additional step, maybe not the final step, but it would certainly take us very close to where we need to be to accomplish the goal. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else online have any questions or comments? Anyone up here? Yes, sir?
I do, thank you. I certainly appreciate staff's offer to see this project through to completion, and while I sincerely do not doubt your ability to do that, your competence, I'm of the opinion that the time requirement, the personnel adjustments that would be necessary, the sheer magnitude of other jobs that we need you to do at this time, really takes it outside of those things I want staff to be focusing on. And certainly supervision of the work product that comes out of any... And certainly supervision of the work product that comes out of any outside contractor. I think that this is something I really want outside hands to be a part of. And while I certainly applaud your enthusiasm for seeing this project through, Madam Chairman, I intend to vote in opposition to the motion and more in line with what has been recommended by the Northern Regional Plan Implementation Committee, the Ladies Island Plan Committee, and each of the citizen groups that have come forward, and the City of Beaufort. But I thank you. I do appreciate what you're suggesting, and I certainly don't doubt your ability to get it done. I think that just have other things for you to do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. Councilman Glover?
Paul, you want to go?
Go ahead. I'll follow you.
I'll follow you, Paul, because you may see what I want to say. So you go ahead.
Okay.
I just detour you.
Oh, you want to get it through? Okay, thank you. Well, I'm kind of saddened that we have conflicting opinions on how we move forward, because we all want the same thing. There's nobody in this room who doesn't want the same thing. It's a question of how we get there and what steps we take along the way. And I am not inclined to sideline staff for an outside consultant at this stage of the game. I don't, and I've listened to everyone in here privately and in other meetings. This isn't the first time we've had this discussion, many, many, many times. First of all, there have been organizations that are not, well, the Northern Regional Plan, the Ladies Island Plan Committee have worked diligently on this, and so their work will not be for naught. Their work will be integrated into whatever happens, whether we go to an outside consultant or whether we continue with staff. My preference is to continue with staff, because saying we're going to continue with staff does not end anything. It doesn't preclude anything. It doesn't mean we can't do something else later on with a consultant or without a consultant if we're not satisfied that we've gotten where we need to go. But I felt from the beginning that staff needs to do whatever they can do, whatever they're willing to do. I don't think it's our position to decide what staff has time to do and what they don't have time to do. That's from the administrator and the executive team to decide. And I've heard the administrator and executive team say, we have the time, we have the talent, and we're going to do it. And what they're going to do, what they propose to do, what they're committed to do, is exactly consistent with what everybody wants us to do. So I'm going to vote for this motion, but all the motion says is we're going to spend no more than $25,000 internally to do this. That doesn't preclude anything. So again, I'm saddened that we don't all see the same path forward, but these things happen, and I will continue to monitor this and be part of this. And if I feel at some point that we need additional support, consultants, I'll be more than happy to support it. And that may happen. I don't know. But we have a very talented staff who's saying, let us do this. And my response to that is, yes, please, do that. But I don't mean to rain on anybody's parade or say anybody is wrong, because as I said, we all want the same thing. How do we get there? And I think this is the step we take. We're not closing any doors. We're not throwing Ladies Island under the bus. We're not abandoning any of the plans that have already been done and are sitting there waiting to be fulfilled. We're just saying, we think this is the right next step, and this is the step we're going to take. So that's what I'm going to do.
Councilman Glover?
You're up.
Yeah. Several years ago, can't remember his name right now, with Conservation Easement, Dana Beach, advised us to make sure that whatever we do, we make sure that we plan for transportation well ahead of our development. And I can't tell you what's going to be developed on Ladies Island in the future, but I do know that roads, infrastructure is important. Saying all that, I'm not too sure whether in-house staff or outside consultant is the appropriate way to go. I do know that I've seen some drawings rendition of the infrastructure dealing with roads and moving traffic that was outlined by citizen group. I don't know whether staff has bought into that or not. So I'm on the mind right now that there's a community group that sees things one way. County government may be seeing it another way. I don't know the true flow of things, and I would love for our staff to get with the Northern Regional Development Implementation Committee, to get with those citizen group to see whether the scope of work that we're talking about is the same and what it will take. What I'd like to see is that the flow of traffic improve to accommodate future growth 30, 40 years from now, because whatever happens on Ladies Island impacts St. Helena and the outlined areas. And we got to come through that unless another bridge is going to be built, without doubt, seriously, whether you're going to do a tunnel or whatever. But I need to protect and do what I can to make sure that the flow of traffic can happen on St. Helena Island and D'Artar and Trip Island, because just a month or so ago, we got stopped for about four hours twice within two weeks. And so it's important that the flow of traffic happens. Now, I don't know from what I'm seeing right now, whether $25,000 can do it. I doubt seriously. So I'm going to vote no, because I think we need to make sure that we got the total scope of work to move forward. And whether that's in-house staff or consultants, we need to do it right. We only have a short time, because development is continuously happening on Ladies Island. That's right. Thank you.
Chair, what's your question?
Chair?
Yes, yes, sir.
It's a question, is this traffic, is this traffic still there? Is this $25,000 traffic, take responsibility, the white collar in-house staff will allow us to hire someone outside, just the collaborative effort between the outside people that would be hired with this money and our staff? Is this $25,000 exclusive or is there a project?
Yes, sir. So this would most certainly be a collaborative effort between the folks that we hire to hold a charrette, to draw the drawings, and the staff to create the standard, and it would most certainly require the cooperation of the other jurisdictions involved.
Okay. But our in-house staff, will you work the collaboration with whoever's supporting on this project, if it's $25,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Oh, go ahead. I have some final questions. Yes, sir?
Yes. I heard a couple different things. When Mayor Murray came up, he said they have some funds set aside, but didn't specify how much. The second gentleman who spoke said the $25,000 could go a long way to solving 70% of the problem. You're talking about a charrette that will tell us if we need to go further in this process. So it would seem to me that's the step we should take at this point in time. Allow collaboratively to see if we can solve the problem in-house, or if we've now defined a greater scope that we're going to have to go to Mayor Murray and say, you have money set aside. How much? Is it going to be enough for us to do the next phase? My comments.
Thank you. I'd like to make a few comments. Your points are excellent, Mr. Atkinson, about what the real question is. I mean, I went to those meetings at Ladies Island Elementary, was over 300 people there. This was, what, five years ago, I think, that happened? We know there's an issue. If it impacts St. Helena, it impacts Port Royal, it impacts the City of Beaufort traffic. I think this is a good start, and I will vote for it. I know some other people voluntarily spent a lot of time on that RFP, and I appreciate all the work they did. But with COVID, we haven't had enough time to hear from the owners of property, the other public that we're not hearing from today. We heard from four people today, and they did a great job. But there's other people who have some real strong ideas about Ladies Island that haven't been able to be in public meetings. And I think we need to start with this charrette, and I hope we can challenge the City of Beaufort to maybe put some skin in this game for the charrette, too. And we'd like to know when they can commit that. And we get a lot of input, and then we'll see where we're at. But I don't see putting out an RFP at this time for $100,000, $200,000, $300,000 contract till we hear more from the public that we haven't heard from in two years. So I will vote for this. Any other comments? Yes, Councilman Rod?
If I understand, this is primarily transportation-related. Is that correct?
It goes well beyond that, sir.
Okay.
It has to do with the design, the circulation. Yeah, it goes well beyond just.
It affects roads and everything. I'm inclined to vote for this since the administration has recommended it. And also, I'm a little sensitive to how this plays out in the next two, three months when we're looking at the transportation sales tax. It sounds like the $30 million that was approved in the prior one is short by, did you say $40 million or something like that? And so I think to be starting into a parallel process while that committee is doing its thing would be cumbersome, and I think we'd be better served to be having the approach that you're suggesting with the staff going forward and not muddy up that penny sales tax committee.
Okay. Any other comments? We'll take a roll call vote.
Just not sure if I could do this.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I do share some of the same, a lot of concerns with Stu. It forces our $40 million, which I'm not sure if that's going based off of Mayor Murray's side. We have a bigger issue than just that. I do think staff needs to move forward.
Can you hold a moment?
We can't understand.
You're so distorted, we can't understand anything any of you all are saying, so we may have to call our IT people to take a quick peek at this, because what you say is important, but I can't understand any of it.
I couldn't understand you, Councilman Cunningham.
And you all, so that's unfortunate, because your words are critical to what we're doing here.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Better, yes.
All right. I'll make a short statement. One of the things I would say about is we are working on, I think, the transportation project is short $3 million, going based off the numbers that Mayor Murray said. It's not something that we can live that way. I will put this on board with staff until I try.
Sorry, I couldn't understand you, Councilman Cunningham.
He's going to support the issue.
Okay, thank you. All right. Does that summarize what you said, Councilman Cunningham? Okay, great. All right. Okay, let's do a roll call vote. The maker of the motion was Councilman Rodman, I think? Is that right? Were you the maker?
I can't remember. Yeah, I was. Somerville made the motion.
You made it? It was Councilman Rodman.
And I think Joe.
Yeah, I did for discussion, that's right.
Okay, so we'll start with you, Councilman Rodman.
Yes.
Okay, and you made the second?
Yes.
All right. We'll start at this end. Councilman Flouelling?
I'm a no. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Somerville?
Yes.
Councilman Glover?
No.
Okay. Councilman Lawson?
Lawson, yes.
Councilman Dawson?
Yes.
Councilman Cunningham?
Yeah.
Councilman McAllen?
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes. The final vote?
Yes, one.
Did I miss someone?
Chris.
Chris Herbison, I'm a no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't see. I couldn't see you. I'm sorry. I apologize. Councilman Herbison?
I'm a no. Thank you.
And the final count?
Yes. I couldn't understand if he said yes.
I couldn't hear what Councilman Herbison said.
He said no.
He said no.
No. Okay, so, all right. All right. We're going on to the next item. It passed.
The number of the votes, the results, the vote?
Three no and?
Eight yes.
Eight yes.
Madam Chairman, I-
We've got to have somebody look at this quality of this sound.
The number of people that we have on Zoom.
If some of you on Zoom who are at the podium would get off, there might be a little more bandwidth. Madam Chairman, I ask permission to excuse. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, we'll go on to number eight, which will be presented by Mr. Merchant, correct? Recommend first reading of an ordinance for approval of a zoning amendment request for 6.26, oh, I'm sorry. Now it's number eight. I'm sorry, I skipped one. This one will be presented by Ms. Nagin. Recommend first reading of an ordinance for approval of zoning map amendment rezoning request for the 19 rural and critical land preservation program properties from various zoning districts to T1 natural preserve.
Need a motion in second before she starts?
Oh, yes, please.
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second. Yeah, sorry.
All right. All right. We'll hear discussion now.
Good afternoon. Thank you for being here today. This item is to downzone 19 of the rural and critical properties. When the program first started, 22 years ago now, in the initial stages, the properties were rezoned shortly after acquisition. And somewhere in the transition of contractors and different people that we had, from Trust for Public Lands to Nature Conservancy to the Open Land Trust, the rezoning of the properties as they were acquired just got lost in the mix. So I noticed that several properties were zoned T2R, some commercial, some neighborhood districts, some were still in PUDs. And so I just thought, well, in order to be consistent through the program, let's go ahead and put them all as T1 natural preserve. And so that's what we're here today, is to do basically a batch rezoning, downzoning of these properties, these 19 properties in this one ordinance.
Okay. Yes, sir. Councilman Glover, got a question?
No.
Comment?
No, I see who.
Oh, well, we have a question.
Well, we have motion in second. The question I have, these 19 properties are under our jurisdiction, they're not easements?
Correct. They are not conservation easements. They are all county-owned feasible properties through the passive park program.
Okay, excellent.
All right, any other questions? Anyone else?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
She said they're all owned by the county, not part of the ownership, right?
Correct.
Correct. Be simple. Anyone else online? Speak up. All right. All right, and we had a motion and a second. Any objection? We'll pass this without objection. Okay. Thank you, Mr.? Okay. Now we get to the next one. Mr. Merchant, this is the recommend first reading of an ordinance for approval of a zoning map amendment request for 6.26 acres at 186 Cherokee Farms Road from T2 rural to T4 hamlet center open. Okay.
Good afternoon. This property is located on Port Royal Island. It's on the south side of Cherokee Farms Road, approximately 600 feet from the entrance to Havercham. And we do have drone footage of this property.
Hold on.
Okay. I'll continue, and then when they have that ready, we'll show it to you. It's, as you said, 6.26 acres. In our comprehensive plan, the area is designated as urban mixed use, but also it is under the air installation compatibility use zone, or ACUs. So it's within the noise contours of the air station. The current zoning of the property is T2 rural, and the applicant is requesting the zoning to be T4 hamlet center open. This property currently, there is a 12,000-square-foot light industrial building on the site, and it almost touches the Havercham community, just shy of that, on the south side of Cherokee Farms Road. And then across the street from that is the Cherokee Farms development, which is kind of the next phase of Havercham. So you're all familiar with Havercham. It's a traditional neighborhood development, walkable community, and there's significant room for expansion in the Cherokee Farms side. I think all total, that community makes up about 427. I think all total, that community makes up about 427 acres with a 1,400 approved residential units. So that's right next door to this development. So when we looked at the impact, we wanted to make sure it was compatible with Cherokee Farms. The other concern was compatibility with the air station since it sits in the noise contours. One of the issues that we asked the applicant to address was to, you know, if they could approach Haversham. And we wanted to make sure that what they were doing on this site was not redundant with what is, there's already capacity within Haversham for significant commercial expansion. Currently, there is a commercial district on Market Street, south of Cherokee Farms Road, and that commercial district continues into the northern side of the road, which is a Cherokee Farms site and has approximately 150,000 additional square feet of commercial that could develop in that area. So we wanted to make sure that in making any changes to this site, we weren't simply creating more competition to an area that already has significant capacity to grow. They approached Haversham and they expressed an interest to see this site develop more in the type of uses that could complement what they have in their main street. So if you think of the main street or what's on Market Street in Haversham, it's offices, boutiques, retail space, restaurants, that type of thing in a walkable main street fashion. But the type of things that they don't have are things like medical offices or, you know, veterinary services, types of uses that may not be appropriate into a main street. So they worked with Haversham. I know that the applicant has, you know, they got some approval from the Haversham Land Company and what they're proposing. We also reached out to the air station. One of the things that we asked them to do, since this district allows for a lot of uses and it allows for fairly high density, is we had them provide a conceptual site plan. And this is simply conceptual because it's not binding with this zoning amendment to show how the site could be developed, you know, given the capacity of what that district allows. They presented two layouts. One has sort of a brewery, beer garden, medical offices, and the other one has assisted living. The air station was very strongly opposed to anything with a concentration of residences, and so assisted living fell in that category. So they were in favor of the plan that did not have any residential component. And so they sort of got their conditional support from the air station as well. As far as staff is concerned, we do have the airport overlay district in place, so that would limit density, residential density on this site. So with all of that, we're, oh, we do have some footage of the site, so you can see where it's located. Okay, this is looking south and that is the existing metal building on the site and the location of Haversham. It's moving west towards the Broad River and Haversham in between there. So really, it's that building, the cleared area and the trees in between there and the entrance to Haversham. But it's approximately six and a quarter acres.
That's the entrance there?
Yeah. That's the main, the Market Street area of Haversham, the cluster of buildings there. And this is looking east. There's the building and the property line pretty much ends at that line of trees. But east, it's much more open. It's primarily the Burton area, picks of kind of rural residential. This is kind of giving you a sweeping view of the property. As far as staff recommendation, staff recommends approval and we believe that the parcel has potential to serve the Haversham Cherokee Farms community with supporting businesses that may not be appropriate in the existing Market Street area. This received, when it went to our planning commission, they voted, a recommendation, a vote to recommend approval failed to pass. They did not recommend disapproval. And because this is in the growth boundary, it also went to the Metropolitan Planning Commission. And at their December 20th meeting, they recommended approval.
They did.
Of this development.
Let's open it up for questions before we go for a motion or we can have a motion first.
I saw that it was T4 neighborhood center changed to something else. What is the difference between those two definitions?
The primary difference is T4 neighborhood center, the building height goes up to four stories, wherein the hamlet center open, which they changed to is two and a half. The other thing is that hamlet center open has a total limit on the square footage of a building. I believe it's 50,000 square feet. There's no limit in the neighborhood center district. And that change was made in part of that discussion with Haversham. And I failed to mention, it originally was supposed to be in our September Planning Commission agenda. We had a negative recommendation at that point due to that zoning and lack of coordination with the air station and with Haversham. And the applicant pulled the request and then we worked with them over those two issues. So we're going to get them to change it.
Other questions?
I'm confused. So the MPC said yes and the PC said no? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, did the Coastal Conservation League speak just to this, just a minute ago in support of it?
I don't think, I don't think they spoke to this particular rezoning.
No, they spoke to the other one.
The Coastal Conservation League did not speak to this one?
No, they didn't.
Okay, all right. And so you support it? And you say the Marine Corps has verbally said to somebody that it's okay?
They have, they do have a support letter in the form of an email from Dave Trail with the.
But it's going from rural, T2 rural, to T4 hamlet center.
Yes.
Is that correct? So let's talk about, just about density. What does that do?
Well, in terms of residential density, because of the airport overlay district, you know, and the ACUs, it could not be more than 212 units per acre. So for a six acre site, there would be no more than 12 units permitted. So regardless of this zoning district, the residential component is limited to two units per acre because there's an overlay district that governs it.
So it's 12 residential. Well, obviously, there's something in there that they're going to get that they don't have under T2 rural.
Yes, they're, they're interested in commercial development, office and retail. And so that's what, that conceptual plan that they submitted with the application shows a mixture of, you know, retail and office.
Which is preferential by the Marine Corps Air Station.
Yes.
Except not a medical.
Okay, thank you.
Except not assisted living.
Yeah, the nursing home assisted living threw up a red flag. And most likely, even if they did rezone it, I mean, at the staff level, we would not permit that because we look at the beds as units and.
So we don't need to put that as a condition on this if we move it forward?
I don't believe it's necessary because the overlay district spells that out.
Overrides it?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, what was, do you remember what the vote, or do you know what the vote was at the planning commission and why they proposed to it?
There was concern about that specific issue. They wanted to have additional agreements or conditions that the applicant and the air station would have. And from staff standpoint, we did not know, we didn't believe that there was a mechanism that they could use as part of the rezoning process. And it was our position that because we have an overlay district that is, you know, designed to enforce the ACUs with the air station, that that was sufficient because it limited the density and incompatible uses in that area.
Councilman Glover had his hand up.
Did I hear you correctly, that you said by changing to the T4 hamlet, they are now able to go four stories?
Correct.
Yeah, it, so their original request was T4 neighborhood center. This is when he originally approached us with a rezoning request. That allows four stories. And this district allows a maximum of two and a half stories.
So that's why they changed it to T4 center hamlet.
Four stories, would that be beside Hilton Head? Would that be some of the highest buildings in the northern part of Beaufort County?
Yeah, I mean, it's, that district is only, applies to certain, you know, select areas of the county. It's our most, it's our highest transect zone, so it's really only appropriate, kind of adjoining municipalities, you know, in area like Boundary Streets or there's some areas, you know, in the outskirts of Bluffton. But you're right, I mean, that's, that's about as tall as you get outside of Hilton Head Island in Beaufort County.
And would the air station approve that's, that height in that area? Just curious.
I don't know if I can answer that.
You can't answer the air station.
We're not in favor. So, you know, that's, that's one of the reasons that they changed the request.
Okay, Count, Chairman Passamit has a question.
When it went before the planning commission? Did it go before the planning commission as T4 neighborhood center and that's why they rejected it?
No, it went before, so the very first meeting was the one that the applicant withdrew. Then it went back to the planning commission in November as T4 hamlet center.
Okay.
And I think that, I remember the discussion that the primary reason they were concerned about, at that point, they did not have a clear approval or disapproval from the air station. There was a lot of discussion about some sort of agreement worked out and we just did not see that as something that's enforceable, you know, in the rezoning process.
So did they take an actual vote then?
Well, this was a, it's kind of a procedural, they voted, somebody made a motion to recommend approval and it failed to gather enough votes to pass. And I don't believe that they.
Took a vote to not approve it.
To deny.
Okay, gotcha.
So it's technically still there?
Does it need to be?
At the planning commission.
Do they need to vote on it before we do?
I think that they were given the opportunity to take action.
So a couple of things, we're working with the chairman of the planning commission to clarify some of this stuff. Our planning commission operates under the premise that if they make a motion and the motion fails, then it goes automatically to a denial.
Okay.
They don't go back and make another motion. We've got to, we've got to work on that and correct that because I'm not sure what the rules and procedures say and I'm not sure that is compliant with Robert's Rules of Order. So, but that's the way it's currently, that's the current practice, so.
So looking in the package, I think you clarified this to me, really, it wouldn't matter if there was any kind of memorandum of understanding between the air station and the owner because the only thing enforceable is the overlay district, correct?
Yeah, they can certainly pursue that, you know, and that, that would be commendable, but we can't require that as a condition of zoning in this case.
The only thing we can require is what's in the zoning for the ACUs. Correct. Okay, anyone else online have some questions? All right, we need a motion.
I'll make the motion to recommend the first reading as proposed.
Do I have a second? From T2 rural to T4 hamlet center.
Correct.
I'll second it.
Okay. Councilman Dawson, second. Do we need a roll call vote? Councilman Cunningham, did you have a question? No? Just, okay. Without objection, this will go on to the first reading.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next one is recommend first reading of an ordinance for approval of a text amendment to the CDC, permitted activities and to revise the Ladies Island Community Preservation, Ladies Island Neighborhood Activity Center and Ladies Island Professional Office Districts to include short-term rentals as a special use. And Ms. Smith is going to talk about this before we take the motion.
Good afternoon. This came about with an application for a text amendment to our department by Mr. Ralph McCarter, who is present in the audience today. He's seeking to add short-term rentals as a special use specifically to the Ladies Island Community Preservation District. This might sound familiar. The Ladies Island Expanded Home Business District was just heard last month and short-term rentals were added to that district as a special use per council's vote. Staff felt that it was also appropriate to add the Ladies Island Neighborhood Activity Center and the Ladies Island Professional Office Districts to this since those are the two more, two least restrictive of the four community preservation districts out there on Ladies Island. So the Ladies Island Expanded Home Business District, which was approved for short-term rentals last month, and the Ladies Island Community Preservation District, which is before you today, are the two most conservative community preservation districts out there on Ladies Island. We took a look at Ladies Island Community Preservation District and it is primarily residential in character. There are very few commercial uses in that district. It does extend for a pretty far way. And we do have a map. I don't know if you guys have it readily available. It's okay if not. But it, it includes a lot of different communities. So I'm just going to give you an example. We've got Celadon, Deer Run, Royal Pines, Trade Winds Plantation, Magnolia Court, and so on. There's lots of different types of communities all throughout this region. We compared the Ladies Island Community Preservation District with our transect zones that already have short-term rentals included as a special use and found that it's pretty comparable to T3 Edge, T3 Hamlet Neighborhood and T3 Neighborhood as far as the uses that are allowed within this zone. And since those three transect zones already include short-term rentals as a special use, this Ladies Island Community Preservation District felt compatible, appropriate for that additional use. And then again, we thought it was a good idea to go ahead and handle the Ladies Island Neighborhood Activity Center and the Ladies Island Professional Office Districts as well at the same time. And I think I will open it for questions if you have any.
I'd just like to make one quick comment before we hear questions. Any of these would have to go through the ZBOA?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
And that process before would be approved as a special use?
Yes, ma'am, yeah. Any short-term rental, so where it stands right now, short-term rentals are special uses in all of our transect zones except for T1 natural preserve and in the Ladies Island Expanded Home Business District and in the C3 Neighborhood Mixed Use District. And so a special use would have to go to the zoning board of appeals with a recommendation from staff on whether or not it's an appropriate use for that property in the zone and area it's in. And then the zoning board of appeals would make a decision and they can tack on conditions as they need, that kind of thing.
Okay, let's open it up. Any questions?
One quick one.
Yes, Councilman.
Couple of years ago, I guess before your time, maybe, and I don't even know what ever happened, but there were some neighbors in the Bluffton community that complained about noise, et cetera, et cetera, because of rental property. And is there any provision in any of the ordinance that deals with noise abuse because of rental?
There comes Chuck.
Let Ms. Raxson address that. I remember that well.
Sure. Good afternoon again. So that falls moreover into the code enforcement aspect of activities like that that would take place. And the answer to that is, yes, we have a noise ordinance and we also have other ordinances about traffic impacts and different things like that. So if it, if it gets out of order and violates one of our ordinances, we definitely have the capacity to go out and take care of it.
Do you remember the neighborhood that came forth?
Is that certain?
Do you remember that neighborhood that came forth? The citizens that came forth several years ago about neighborhood that was basically rental property and?
I do. I don't remember the name of it. I can tell you that there have been a few since also with, with a number of issues like that. And every one of them, we take them individually, we compare the situation with our ordinance, and if there is a violation, we have code enforcement staff that go out and address that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And I will add to you that we took this before the Ladies Island Community Preservation Committee back in November. Committee back in November, and it was, it wasn't a very well-attended meeting, but at the time, there was no objection to the inclusion of the short-term rental special use into the LICPC district, along with the recommendation for the LI NAC, the Neighborhood Activity Center, and the LI Professional Office Districts. And then Beaufort County Planning Commission reviewed it in December of last year and voted seven to two to recommend approval of adding the short-term rental as a special use to these three districts.
Councilman Somerville, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, this has become a topic du jour, it's a hot topic everywhere, and there are pros and cons. In my neighborhood, I live in the city of Beaufort in the Pigeon Point neighborhood, and a while back, one of my neighbors wanted to convert a house to a short-term rental. So I was faced with this, and I was asked, as, as a neighbor, to offer my opinion in writing, which I did. And I supported it, I thought that he was a responsible person, and I knew he was a responsible person, and I knew if there was a problem, he would deal with it. And it's been, we've had short-term rentals in there for a long time, we've never had a problem. I like it as a special use because it allows the neighbors to have input. And I've been listening carefully to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I want to make sure that they share my view that the neighbors' opinions are relevant to whatever decision they make, whether it's a short-term rental, or whether it's a coffee shop and somebody's back, or whatever it is. So I'm inclined to support this. I, I think it gives, it gives enough, enough input, opportunity for input from the neighborhood, and it's taken seriously, and so I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it, I'm gonna support it.
Anyone online have any questions or comments? Like to entertain a motion to pass this recommendation?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We had a second. Any, without any objection, this passes, and thank you for the explanation, appreciate it. Okay, the next one in your packet was different than what was, what was published was different on the amendment. This is number 10, so I need, Ms. Brock, I need to read this out loud, or do you want to put it up on the screen, the corrected version?
It's the ordinance.
The ordinance is different.
In the ordinance, it mentions that the Planning Commission voted to deny the rezoning, but that's incorrect, it was voted to approve.
Okay, and the final version will say to approve?
Yes, we will ensure it is updated.
Yeah, okay, so I don't need to read the whole thing? Okay, so you want to take this one?
Absolutely, yes, thank you. So, as was just mentioned, we, we were talking about T4 Neighborhood Center and how some of these districts exist on the outskirts of Bluffton. Well, that's where we're going, to the outskirts of Bluffton for this particular rezoning. And I do have some maps available for you all to look at, and we'll do the video as well here in a moment, so you can see this property. But this is a pretty straightforward rezoning request. The property in question, owned by Mr. Mihai, is six and a half acres, it is currently zoned T4 Hamlet Center open. Mr. Mihai owns the neighboring property as well, which is currently zoned T4 Neighborhood Center. So the reason this is before you today is because the owner is trying to achieve compatible, synonymous zoning across both parcels, with the intent to develop both of them at the same time, and so wants to work within the same regulations underneath each. If you'll recall earlier, we were talking about T4 Hamlet Center open, so here's our map coming up for you to help kind of visualize where we are. And I may have included too many, it might be a little bit of overkill, but wanted to make sure. So you can see right next door to the property, which is outlined in red, that you've got the T4 Neighborhood Center, which is the requested rezoning for this new property, this 28 Buckingham Plantation Drive. Across Bluffton Parkway there, that is Edgewater, the Edgewater Apartment Complex, which we will see in aerial here in a moment, so you can kind of see the way the landscape looks. That is a, a T4 Hamlet Center open development, so it gives an example of what that district allows, that's the current district of the property in question this afternoon. To the south of the property is the Old South Pud with its golf course and associated residential development. And then flanking across the street around Edgewater is C5 Regional Center Mixed Use. This is commercial development, so Tanger Outlets, self-storage units, a variety of other uses, a fire district, that's where we're, kind of the realm that we're working within. And we can go ahead onto the next slide. The property, as mentioned, is six and a half acres. There we are. So kind of a repeat of the same thing that we're working on, we can go ahead and move on to the next one. Wanted to make sure we all had a good layout. So this is an aerial image to give you an idea of what the area looks like. So again, to the south, we have the Old South Golf Course and associated residential development, kind of moving to the southeast. Across, to the north, across the Bluffton Parkway, you can see the Edgewater development directly across from where that red, red arrow is. And then the Tanger Outlet subdivisions there, and then we'll go ahead onto the next slide. This one gives us a closer look. It is an undeveloped lot, this lot and the neighboring lot were on a pre-existing executive course, I think is what it was called, it was a nine-hole, three-par golf course in the past. And so you can see Edgewater again, straight across the street there, just giving you a better look at that, and then I think the next slide is the video. So moving towards Bluffton, down Bluffton Parkway, where the red trees start, this was taken back in October, this is where the property begins. So you can see the golf course behind it. When we get to the curb cut, which is directly across from the entrance into Edgewater, that's where the property line ends, right here. And then the neighboring property is owned by the same property owner. Looking out towards the southeast, again, where the red trees are, that's kind of your focus point for this property in question. Going south, over towards the golf course. This is from behind the property, so if you were on the golf course looking north, Tanger and Edgewater on the other side of the street. And then going towards Hilton Head, the opposite direction from where we started. So T4 Hamlet Center Open is a more kind of suburban development, allows for mixed use, pedestrian sheds, biking and walking with some commercial within the residential areas. T4 Neighborhood Center is slightly more intense, as we were just talking on a couple of items ago, so it would allow a more of a Main Street feel of development, of mixed-use development within that area. And I think Rob mentioned, you know, one of the biggest differences between the two is you're going from 2.5 stories allowed to four stories. So we took a look at this and compared it to our comprehensive plan, our 2040 Comprehensive Plan, it was one of the first ones I got to do under the new comp plan, and looked at the future land use for this area that is designated as urban mixed use. T4 Neighborhood Center does fall within that designation, so it is compatible with our future land use designation. It would not be a split zoning, it is right next door to T4 Neighborhood Center, and would actually, or it would not be a, I'm sorry, a spot zoning, but it would help rectify what is a split zoning. And it is appropriate with the surrounding character of the land, that is a pretty mixed-use area of the corridor, so it wouldn't really impact the char, character of the surrounding area. Water and sewer are available to service the property, and EMS and fire facilities are within a half mile of the site, so they would be served appropriately. At the, our recommendation, staff's recommendation, is that it is consistent, we recommend approval of this rezoning request. At the December Planning Commission meeting, the commissioners voted seven to two to recommend approval. And I'm ready for questions.
Any questions?
Yes, or Councilman Somerville?
Has the applicant given you any indication of what they might like to do there?
In the application packet that we got, there was a conceptual mixed-use development proposed, so residential, I believe multifamily was in there, would, the intent is to have as much as possible on that narrow area, its own street network and this type of thing happening.
Apartments or condos and maybe a couple of little stores?
It could be, yes.
Okay, any questions online? Yes, Councilman Harbison.
Thank you. Can you help to quantify the difference in density between the current zoning and the proposed zoning?
So where, you're looking for the difference in density between the two? Yes.
Yeah, like how many more units, how much more traffic can use, things like that?
Yeah, that's a good question. So when we were taking a look at this, a part of what we need to do is determine if it triggers a TIA. And so we used the different regulations for both zones, and essentially came up with a number of about 40 different units between the two, if you're going with the multifamily there. So between T4 Hamlet Center open to T4 Neighborhood Center, using your most intense uses, it was about 40 units. This didn't trigger the TIA at this time, but when, if this rezoning is approved and the development project is brought forward to us, we would assess it at that point, at a standalone point, and reassess for a TIA.
Just, just for the public, TIA is?
Oh, apologies, a traffic impact assessment.
But how much weight is your neighboring property's in the units, how many are we looking at?
On the neighboring property.
Correct, so we, so we, I don't know, everything's in the rental for you, and it's probably, probably looking at. The reason why I ask is that's right there because of the, it's against the bridge, perfection of the bridge. Traffic there, the traffic on, the traffic there personally is a bit of a concern, not wondering what that's gonna look like. Once that's all about, what's the kind of situation like, as far as you may run through there, say, you know, the circumstances, how long, think about it.
Absolutely, and I don't, I don't have a number for you for the neighboring property right now, I'd be happy to look into it and, and report back. But I do know as well that our engineering department is working with their on-call traffic consultants to scope out a scope and fee for the Bluffton Parkway to do an access management plan for this area, so we are thinking about traffic impacts and those, the types of future development that's happening would certainly be considered within that.
I, I think that's important, that one is just understanding exactly how many units are going in there in the middle, and what does that mean? I'll do it to give this forward to council, but, but I'll take it at a presentation.
Councilman Harbison, we're having trouble understanding your last statement, could you, could you understand, Julian?
I think you're saying that the total number of units would be nice to know, right?
Correct.
Yes. Yes.
We have that, but then, okay. All right, any other questions, anyone online, or?
Hold on, the total number of units would be what?
Would be nice to have a total number of units across both parcels, is what Councilman Harbison is requesting, yes.
We'll have that information, all right. All right, if there are no other questions, do I have a motion whether to send this forward?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a second? All right, Councilman Rodman, second. Without objection, this one?
I would actually check, thank you.
Okay, do you have a question, comment, Councilman Cunningham?
Uh, no ma'am, just, we dealt with rezoning, I'm probably sure, T the Bluffton Parkway was to get traffic, so, and I was up against, and I think this is a good suggestion, right here, on the app I have.
You know, we can't go on like this, not knowing, having no idea what, what these guys are saying.
I would just put it about it and, 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 and.
Yeah, Logan, you're, you're being, you're being cheated here, because whatever you're saying is not being heard by everybody, which is really unfortunate.
If I understood what Logan had said, that because of what's happening on the Bluffton Parkway, in general, throughout the Bluffton Parkway, he would not be supportive of this particular one, because it's actually going to add to the density and problems on Bluffton Parkway.
Okay, well, let's, we're gonna do a roll call vote, thank you.
Good summary, Logan.
He did a thumbs up, all right. All right, maker of the motion, we're gonna have a roll call vote, you are the maker of the motion?
Yes, I'm going to vote yes.
And Councilman Rodman?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Glover?
Right now, yes, uh-huh.
Councilman Somerville?
Yes.
All right, Councilman Dawson?
Yes.
Councilman Cunningham? No?
No.
Councilman McAllen?
Yes.
Councilman Harbison?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, and we will get more information at the next step.
It's 10 yes.
Just, just for clarification, everyone, there has to be something going on in the, in the line, because we've had people on, we've had more people than this on Zoom, and it, and it's worked fine.
Yep.
So it's nothing internal in the system, and if you all want a further explanation, we can let Patrick Hill give you all an explanation about what's going on, but it's not us, it's not happening in this building.
Could, could we have a brief explanation? I'd like to start one.
I think it's, it must be something, it must be something with the cloud provider. Zoom doesn't exist in Beaufort County, it's probably a server in Atlanta or something, so there's, there must be some sort of connection from Hilton Head or from Bluffton up to that, that area that's causing difficulty, because they all have, they all have low bandwidth symbols, and the odds of everybody there having low bandwidth is pretty small, so it must be something going on.
Who's missing?
So if they could talk, it's actually, since they know that they have low bandwidth, it makes it slower, so it gives them time to process what they're saying.
That's it.
Mike Larson?
Oh, Mark Lawson, yeah, that's two.
So, what, what, I think one partial solution to this is you can make comments online, if you don't mind typing them, let's do that, if you have them, okay?
If they can do the chat, or they can speak slower, because we can hear them if they talk slower, what's happening is the words are getting muffled together because the bandwidth isn't keeping up with their language, so there's, things getting condensed. So if they talk slower, we'll be fine.
Is the reverse okay? Can you hear us clearly?
Yes, sir, they've messaged in, they can.
Okay.
Think of us as not very bright people, and speak to us accordingly, and all will be well in God's kingdom.
Or type, type it out, okay.
Okay.
All right, so we're up to number 12, which is first reading of ordinance for approval of a zoning map amendment request for 11.66 acres at 100 Rostrum, Rastrum? Am I saying that right?
Rostrum.
Drive from T2 Rural to T2 Rural Neighborhood, and this is the one that you were asking about, that Ms. White spoke about. Okay, all right.
Okay, I, I will say at the outset that the person who represents the applicant is here, and he said that he is requesting this item be tabled, so.
Are we talking about 11 or 12?
11 postponed.
11 is no longer on the agenda, we're at item number 12.
We put, we amended the agenda at the beginning, Councilman McAllen?
Got it, okay.
All right, so he is requesting postponement of number 12, the owner?
Yes.
Okay, and we have done that in the past, correct?
Sure.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Well, we would need a motion.
Yeah, okay, we have a motion?
But it can't be a motion to table.
If it's postponed, it has to be to a time certain, if it's tabled, it just sits there until.
Right.
And the, that person's here, if you wish to have some clarity, or else.
Yes. Whether you want to table it or postpone it?
Just want to, I'm, hi, I'm Mike Condon, this is here, we have a lot of information still coming in because of the holidays with this exact project. The owner, Mr. Ben Kennedy, the legality of the length of Rostrum, the road, the connection of the eight people that live off of this road that he owns, also the fact of what can actually be done on the property, and we'd like to get with the owners personally and, and chat and talk to them without coming forward further and presenting the case. So we would like another 30 days extension, or however that would be, to finalize our analysis if possible.
Okay, I'm looking to our county administrator attorney, do we want to word it as a postponement or tabling?
Postponement is fine, and you can say simply, if I hear him correctly, to the next meeting of Natural Resources.
That's what it would be.
Yes, sir, I'm just trying to get more information, and would like to set up a neighbor meeting.
Okay.
Motion to postpone till the February meeting, I'm sorry, March meeting?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilman Rodman, second, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, without exception, without objection?
Well, any discussion on that?
Okay, any discussion?
None, okay, we're good.
Just one quick point, the reason for postponement is if you table, it requires a vote of the body to actually bring it back, and so it's, it's very difficult, so postponements almost always work better.
All right, tabling, you are tabling it till later on in that agenda. By Robert's rules, when you table something, you're going to By Robert's rules, when you table something, you're going to take it at a later time in that agenda.
Okay.
Postponement means you're going to take it up at a future point in another meeting.
I, I, maybe I don't understand, but I actually thought the table was something that it was indefinite when it came back, but it took a vote of the body to bring it back.
That's not my understanding. But we'll...
We'll, we'll take...
I'm not sure, but you did the correct thing to bring it back in March. Okay.
I agree.
Let's go on.
Yes. I have a question. Um, when this comes back to us, will it also go before the other boards, the commission and aisles? Will we get it or is it just coming back for us with those aisles itself?
It'll, it'll just come back to Natural Resources, the other boards and commissions have finished their, uh, work with this.
Well, if, if, okay. And what, and first they'll work based on the presentations that were made. So are we going to have a different presentation for the one that was denied by the board?
Well, yeah. And let me, let me clarify. I understand what you're asking now. I think is that if you all were to get information before Natural Resources Committee that you felt was significant enough to affect the recommendations of their, of the boards like the Planning Commission, then you could refer it back to the Planning Commission for a recommendation before the Natural Resources Committee took action on it.
Well, that may cause a further delay in this for the people who are potential.
It could.
This is going to be a, this is going to be a material change to their potential for this. Why they come back to us, uh, going with each other's people first?
Because, um, the, the, uh, Planning Commission has already made their recommendation and that's what the statute requires them to do is make a recommendation. If you all want them to consider additional things based on the additional information presented, then you would actually have to remand it back to the Planning Commission for an additional recommendation.
Well, I'm, uh, I'm just here on that, Eric. And that's what we're saying. It appears as this presentation parade, the aisles registered, and now it appears we may be getting a entirely different presentation under the negative denial issue. So what, I don't know if I understand this. Okay. Let's call my first.
Yeah. This is, this is why, um, that it's very important for those that may be listening and in the room here, this is why it's very important for the applicant, instead of rushing in, to give a rezoning application to meet some contractual deadline for real estate purposes and things like that, that they wait until they get all their information together and give us the complete package that they want county council to consider. This is the second one today where staff, uh, received an application and the applicant started sending us additional information after they submitted their application. Staff has no ability to legally deny someone moving forward their rezoning application once they've checked all the boxes. We have to process that and bring it before you all. You all can either defer it on your own or grant a request for deferral by the applicant, but it's very important that people who submit rezoning applications to the staff submit the complete package with everything in it before they start getting in the middle of this process. If they don't have all the information, then they shouldn't submit the rezoning.
Well, you're exactly right. It's just, you know, it's the first two steps in the process here and we're going to get a different characterization of this project that was presented to the other boards that already voted on. So I don't know, I'm, I'm on clear what they expect us to do. If we're supposed to make a decision or if it's something else we're first for a recommendation to take from this.
Yeah.
Because if they come in to us first, they're circumventing the processes we have in place.
Yeah. I, I agree with you. And we, we as staff can look at that information once we get it and make a recommendation to Natural Resources at the next meeting as to whether or not we think that you all should remand it back to the Planning Commission. We'll be glad to do that.
Thank you very much.
All right. We are up to, um, number 13, which is recommendation of a first reading for an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute the necessary documents to convey a portion of property owned by Beaufort County. This is going to be presented by Ms. Ward and Ms. Nagin. I think we have a, this is a, a real estate action, so I'd just like to remind council that this will need a two-thirds vote. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. Sarah's going to pull up the, um, the slide to help illustrate the issue. Um, while she's doing that, though, I can give you a little bit of background information. Uh, at the time of acquisition, the Pine View property on Ladies Island and the adjacent vacant private residence were sharing an entry access drive. When I, uh, when I first started looking at this property, I thought that that driveway was shared. I thought the, um, parcel line was in the middle, but after we re-looked at the survey, we realized the driveway is fully on the county property. And the previous landowner to Pine View and the vacant, um, resident, the, the residence that was vacant at the time were actually sharing that drive, so the previous landowner was allowing that person to utilize that driveway. There it is. So the yellow section that is outlined is roughly where that driveway is. Um, there is approximately a 50-foot, uh, access right there between the house and the, and the yellow line. So during the Pine View Preserve conceptual plan process, our consultants and I agreed that the new driveway, in order to, to reduce any public and private user conflicts with the public coming into that drive and the private residence, whoever that person might be, um, utilizing it for their home, in order to avoid conflict there and the potential for the public to, to possibly park on their lawn, um, if the parking lot got overflowed, we wanted to move the driveway for the public access up to where it's aligned across the street from, I believe that's John Calhoun Road. Might be Road or Street. So our conceptual plan shows that. You all were presented with that conceptual plan, I believe, in December. When the T1 NP downzonings came before the Planning Commission for discussion, the new owner of that house came to the Planning Commission and asked to have a meeting with me and Brittany and Mr. Merchant to discuss the use of that driveway because she was wanting to improve it because the front entrance of it is a little bumpy. Um, so after we had some discussions with her, um, we realized that it might be in the best interest to just sell her that driveway since we were going to relocate ours. A question, though, came up was would SC DOT be okay with that scenario with those two driveways being relatively close together? I did get confirmation from SC DOT doing, doing a preliminary review of the Pine View conceptual plan that they are fine with our driveway for public access and commercial use being across the street and aligned with John Calhoun. However, their condition was you couldn't have two driveways on the same parcel. So they said that we would have to remove the southerly driveway. I called them and explained the situation and said if we sold that driveway to the neighbor as she had requested, would that be okay? Would they still be able to retain private residence? And they said yes, as long as it wasn't, um, two commercial driveways. So the ordinance before you, the recommendation for ordinance before you today is to sell that area of driveway to the adjacent neighbor, which would then change our boundary line to not include that. And then she can appropriately fencing gate it as necessary for private residents. And it would align up with her back corner 50 feet in from our property line down to Sam's Point Road, um, and then give her that, that amount. We did pay for this property, the ordinance, I believe I state that. Yes. We did pay $27,613.05 per acre for this particular property. And they have agreed to, uh, pay that amount per acre basis. It's going to be much less than an acre of land, but they did agree to pay that amount to reimburse the program for the amount that we're selling. Um, we will get a official survey that will designate the area and how much that amount, amount of acreage is. And then enter into an agreement, a purchase agreement at the, at the time after we get the survey.
Ms. Ward, do you have anything to add?
Did a great job.
Okay. All right. Let's open it up for questions before we have a motion of some kind.
What's the estimated, um, acreage you considering at this time? Roughly a tenth?
Point one. Yeah.
I think when we estimated just on GIS, if you're looking at, um, older surveys, we were looking at a tenth to two tenths of an acre. We're not talking...
Two tenth?
To, two tenths of an acre. Yes, sir. I think, I believe that's what we were looking at. It was like a tenth of an acre.
A tenth, it's roughly a tenth of an acre, yeah.
Eight tenth or two tenth?
Between a tenth and two tenths. So between one and two tenths, somewhere in, in there. I don't know for certain until we have it surveyed, but we didn't want to spend the money on the survey until we knew that the committee was at least comfortable with pursuing the...
What's the width of it, um?
50 feet.
Okay.
I just don't know the exact length.
I got you. 50 feet. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Is this the only access to her, the person's house too?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I thought so. Any other questions or? Anybody online have questions? Okay. All right. We need to entertain a motion.
So move.
All right. Motion by Councilman Somerville, the second. Councilman Rodman? Okay. Councilman Rodman? Without objection, this will move forward to, um, full council. Are you, just a question, you, will you wait till it goes to full council before you do the survey?
I believe Stephanie has been in conversations with the surveyor, but it is being on hold until we get, um...
A final approval. Okay. Thank you. All right. The next one is discussion. This one does not take a motion, just discussion of stormwater utility fees and intergovernmental agreements. Mr. Desai and Ms. Ward are going to present that. This is for information only, correct?
Yeah. This item here is just for discussion only. It's the current IGAs that we have in particular with the city of Beaufort as well as the town of Port Royal as it pertains to the stormwater utility. Looking at, uh, per both of those municipalities' requests about not pursuing delinquent fees for the military installations and military properties, we're looking to amend the IGAs. While we're looking to amend it, we're also looking to do some, uh, clarification and some cleanup and whatnot, and also add some language about the new MS4 permit.
Yes, sir. Do we have questions?
Great thing to do.
Yes, Councilman Rodman?
So I, I understand the delinquent fees. We would still be pursuing the current fees going, a going-forward basis from the military installations? Might, have got the right subject matter here?
This one might not, uh, go well. Uh, so as you all know, we've been, uh, working, um, sorry, I think I just turned my mic off here. Let me check. Um, yeah. So as you all know, we've been working on this issue for some time, uh, and we are trying to get a discussion with our partners, uh, at the air station and, um, Paris Island. So in order to do that, they do not want to pursue anything if we have the threat of dealing with attorneys on this particular issue. So I have suspended our relationship with the attorneys in order to be able to have a discussion with our military partners. I think once we get in a room together, I think the air station, Paris Island, and I can bring a proposal back to you all that will be equitable and everyone's benefit. But we cannot do that as long as there's a potential legal action looming over everyone's head. So I have suspended that relationship. If we cannot come to a resolution, you all as county council can tell me to pick it up, back up again with the, uh, with the outside legal counsel and we'll be glad to do that. But I have temporarily halted that, that action.
It could be picked up again with the delinquent fees.
Could be.
Okay. Understand.
Anyone online have some comments or questions? Anyone here? Councilman Glover?
Do we need a motion to...
No.
No.
No. No, I just want you all to be aware of what's going on. And I, and again, you know, just so council's aware, we've had both of the municipalities that have these properties inside their jurisdiction have told us that they do not want us to pursue any fees, uh, current or delinquent. So they're going to be the ones to get the fees up anyway since it's in their jurisdiction. So...
Yeah. As I kind of remember, it's been a while, of course, that we were going to be paying most of the legal cost and most of the benefit was going to go to the two municipalities. Is that correct?
You're exactly right.
Mayor Murray has his hand up.
You remember correctly.
If, um, Mr. Greenway, Mayor Murray has his hand up.
Oh, yeah. I'm happy to let Mayor Murray. This, this is probably one thing that Mayor Murray and I will very much agree on.
It's a red letter day. Okay.
Madam Chairman, thank you for indulging me and giving me a, a point of personal privilege. I know it's not public comment time, uh, but this issue is something I'm, I'm pretty passionate about. Going back before I was mayor, when I was a council member, uh, we got word that the county, on behalf of the city and the town of Port Royal, had engaged an out-of-state law firm, uh, to seek, uh, municipal stormwater fees. And while I'm appreciative that you acted on the city's behalf, um, we weren't aware that you were taking that action and were a bit surprised, uh, that the first course of action was to hire lawyers and to threaten our partners at DOD who provide over $2 billion worth of economic impact for us annually without maybe going down and sitting down and having a, a conversation with them. Uh, we've been in constant communication with DOD and local base officials, uh, and I think Mr. Greenway hit the nail on the head. It's hard for us to go have a, a civil conversation with folks when, what I'm told, we've spent several hundred thousand dollars of getting out-of-state lawyers with public money, uh, on something where I think good neighbors go and, and work with each other. So I'm happy to hear that you have, uh, withdrawn the lawyers. Happy to hear that you're taking this issue up. I just found out this was on the agenda about two hours ago from my letter that I wrote you almost a year ago now. So I'm happy to see that we're making some progress. We, we don't, the city has not said we're closing the door completely to this, uh, but we would love to sit down with the county, with the folks at DOD, with the town of Port Royal, uh, to see if there is some agreement because we're told, uh, that other communities around the country have been able to amicably reach agreements on these types of, of structures and funding sources. And so, uh, would welcome a, a continued conversation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. For the public's information, there's, uh, two letters in the packet today, one from the city of Beaufort and one from the town of Port Royal. Town of Port Royal is, um, some of you may know, has annexed the Naval Hospital and Paris Island. The city of Beaufort has annexed, uh, the air station. The only property in the unincorporated areas that's Department of Defense is Laurel Bay, which is in the unincorporated part of the county. That's just for the public's information, if anyone cares to look at that. Any, any other comments?
Yeah. Just one comment. I've always tended to be opposed to this, but one of my concerns, and maybe it's unfounded, but it seems to me if we were, if I think about Paris Island and we were getting fees from them for stormwater, they might turn around and say, well, now that you're getting from them for stormwater, they might turn around and say, "Well, now that you're getting the fees, hey, we've got $50 million in stormwater improvements, and they're yours." And I think that's an exposure for us.
Yeah, and then, when I use the word temporarily, that's not the correct word. I have suspended the relationship with the attorneys at this point, because I don't, I would not recommend to you all that we ever pick that back up, regardless of what happens here, to your point. And secondly is that, you know, the Paris Island and the air station, they spend a bunch of money every year doing their own MPDS Phase II stuff on their property. Probably more, they probably have a higher threshold for their bases and things, given the type of materials that are stored on-site, than we would for any county property or any of our stormwater facilities, so...
So is there any good reason why, is there any good reason why we shouldn't just kill this thing now? I don't hear anybody that's talking in favor of it.
Yeah, I mean, you can kill it if you want to. If you want to make a motion to kill it, we'll make a motion to kill it, and we'll put the appropriate document on your next council meeting to have the full council do it. The air station and Paris Island folks, the mayors of Port Royal and the city of Beaufort, and the chamber, Beaufort City Chamber, they would love to hear us do that. So I would applaud you if you want to do that.
I guess I wonder if there's anybody that really thinks we should continue this in any form.
I can also speak for the stormwater board. They were against it, too.
Neil's got some more stuff to add. So, Mr. Rodman, just to add to that, our goal today was for information only, and the goal is to bring back the IGA, the legal department. But the next step is to bring it to the utility board, which is on Wednesday afternoon. And then from there, we go through the formal...
So they'll probably come back.
Just wanted to give kind of a little bit of a background and the path forward.
Sounds like it's time to kill it, but do it in a logical fashion.
Yes, sir.
The stormwater board meets Wednesday, so it'll be discussed there.
Okay. That's all I can do.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you for the update. Okay, we have some appointments, and can we consolidate these into one motion? Okay, I'm going to read them out loud, and then I'll entertain a motion.
You do have an individual, Mr. Pappas is online, who's being reappointed.
Yes. Thank you, he is. Okay, first one, we're going to do, I'm going to read them, and then we'll make a motion. Someone will. Reappointment of Ed Pappas to the Beaufort County Planning Commission for a three-year term with an expiration date of 2025. Appointment of Daniel Rydel to the Beaufort County Planning Commission for a partial term with an expiration date of 2023. And we have who he's replacing here, too, Mr. Henscher. Would you like to recognize him, Mr. Henscher?
Oh, oh, Jason, of course. Yeah, let me, thank you very much. I'm sorry, I got sidetracked there. Jason has served faithfully on the planning commission for...
I think seven years.
Seven years? Before, he was in high school when he joined the planning commission, and you can see what he looks like now, but, and he has spoken to me privately some time ago and said he would faithfully serve until we could find a replacement. And this is for the ladies' island slot on the planning commission, and Mr. Rydel has graciously agreed, and he's been interviewed by Jason as well as by Ed Pappas, the chairman. And we're looking forward to approving him today. But thank you very much for your service.
Appreciate it.
Godspeed, and we won't, next time we'll ask you permission to bring you back. We won't just automatically vote you in without your permission and consent. Thanks. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. We appreciate what you, that's a hard job.
Thank you.
We do have another wife, so, family, children, business. Okay, continuing with these. Reappointment of James Atkins and John Michael Brock to the Beaufort County Design Review Board for a third term with expiration date of 2026. Reappointment of Cheryl Steele to the Beaufort County Historic Preservation Review Board for a second term with an expiration date of 2026. And appointment of Eileen LeBlanc to the Beaufort County Design Review Board for a first term with an expiration date of 2026. I have a motion to these appointments and reappointments.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Without objection, these people are reappointed or appointed to their positions. Thank you again. And I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
We do not think there will be any need for a motion coming out of executive session. I could be wrong about that, but I do not think so, just for those that are exonerated in the audience.
Okay. And did we get a second for the motion?
Second.
Okay, Councilman Glover, without objection, we'll go into executive session. Thank you.
We have to come back.
National Resource Committee is adjourned. Thank you.
I told you that...
Thinking of natural resource committee is adjourned. Thank you.
I told you that...